Note the time that you're going to recommence.
Thank you councillors, can I just note the time is now 7:01, we'll recommence our meeting, thank you. Councillors, there is a recommendation, as we noted earlier before the adjournment, on page 145, sorry, 146 and many others after that, so 20...
146 and 147.
Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to a planning permit application 2016-330, use and development of the land for a caravan park including host farm, primary produce sales and restaurant at 215 Mitchell Road, Kyla.
Mr Mayor, I foreshadow a motion should the original motion be defeated.
Thank you councillor, I was sorry, that's been noted.
Motion being?
Yes, the note, yes, sorry councillor.
The motion being that in relation... That in relation to the planning application 216-330, that the proposal of a caravan park with host farm with associated primary produce sales and restaurant at 215 Mitchell Road, Kyla, on the basis of the information before council and having considered all relevant matters required by the Planning and Environment Act 1987, council resolves to grant a planning permit as outlined below, following conditions that apply to this permit, and I've got a five-page document with a list of conditions subtitled amended plans, section 173 agreement, stage development, detailed construction plan, drainage discharge, a whole gamut of them. So I just flagged it.
Sorry, did you want my information councillor Hazleman in regard to the motion, the foreshadowed motion?
And Mr Mayor, if we got to that stage, I'd like to make some comments.
At that stage, if and when, I'm sure you'll be invited to do so.
Thank you.
Have any councillor wishing to move the motion, as I said, the recommendation, sorry, as previously mentioned? No.
Mr Mayor, I'm left with a recommendation printed on page 146 and 147 of the agenda.
Do I have a second now?
I will second it.
Councillor Patterson? Councillor Hazleman?
Considering this application, I'm mindful of a number of things. Firstly, the clear statement that as the land is situated at the moment, it's within the farming zone, it's part within the urban floodway zone, part within the floodway overlay and land subject to inundation. These are not subjective assessments, these have been determined and are part of the council's planning scheme. They don't change unless there's going to be some substantial rezoning of that particular area of land. The other point I'd make is that part of the application required a cultural heritage management plan, and the officers note that the plan does not cover the entire development site, and in that effect, it would be non-compliant. Also very, very mindful of the objections raised by the Gold and Broken Catchment Management Authority. And others might claim, yes, they're a referral authority, but the council isn't obliged to follow what the CMA determined. I would suggest that by not following the CMA, we're heading into a situation that I'd almost describe as anarchy, because, you know, by statute, the Catchment Management Authority and the council are required to establish a determined flood level at the one in a hundred year event, and that's the standard planning tool right across Victoria. Any residential subdivision, any application for the erection of a simple house has to comply with that rule. And where does the council get its flood levels from? It gets them through those adopted and set out and tested by the Catchment Management Authority. And I can't think of any circumstance, any precedent in this municipality where the council has in fact gone against the CMA's recommendations. And certainly, I would think we'd be dragging one leg behind us if we were trying to take that to VCAT and say, well, we didn't like what the CMA was saying, so we're going to ignore what they said. Ignoring what the CMA says, when in fact, we've already determined on the basis of the information advice provided by the CMA, the actual zoning of the land this application refers to, we've already been down that path, we've already accepted what the CMA has said by establishing those zones in our planning scheme. So any suggestion that we're going to move away from this recommendation, and I also note that the officers didn't go to the extent of seeking comment or advertising it for the impact that it may have on neighbours or others who may feel they are impacted by it. I think that point five of the recommendation is quite pertinent in that, that...
I'm councillor Hazleman. Briefly, we're all in agreement to continue, carry on.
That if indeed that the recommendation is passed, and the applicant should then determine that to seek a review at VCAT, that the council position would be that VCAT be asked to provide or require public notice of the application. So in that regard, all of the rights of all of the stakeholders in this are being protected.
Thank you councillor Hazleman, councillor Patterson?
Yes, I've been aware of this development, of course, as most of us have for a couple of years. It is a great proposal, it really is, it would be great for the town if they could get up. There is a list of things there that the officers have put forward which basically prevents it. I believe a lot of them could be worked around, but the farming land is still going to be used as farming land in association with education, you know, that's good, but I just cannot get past the Catchment Management Authority soon as someone puts an application in to oppose it, that's going to knock it on the head. You know, I'd love to see it repositioned in some way where I could go ahead, I'd fully support it, I honestly would, but I can't see us supporting that now because it'll get an opportunity against the VCAT on the flood overlay issue.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillor Aresvari?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Note the comments of both councillor Hazleman and of councillor Patterson. In short, the, as like councillor Patterson, I too have been, councillor Hazleman have been aware of this pending application and been on for a number of years. This particular application, I welcome. I urge my fellow councillors to consider it as a genuine example of what such developments could bring to this community. Goldan Valley particularly, Greater Shepherd and is the food bowl, we market ourselves as such, and here is a perfect opportunity to put our money where our mouth is and demonstrate to the larger community that we are in fact open for business in the form of tourism and value-adding to the net economic benefit of our community. People love food, they like to experience new things, travel and eat, and the application has an agricultural feel, the mind ticks all the boxes. To fly in opposition to such a development is to fly in the face of common sense and to harness a market that is looking to Asia. Now, we bang on about going to Asia and opening up that, and the Great Things Happening Here campaign is an example of this newfound enthusiasm and impetus, and this particular application would fit hand in glove, where our eyes are looking to that particular market. We have an enviable and demonstrated reputation as a clean food country to our Asian neighbours. The preparedness of investors to invest in business in our local area can only be viewed as a positive step and further reflects favourably on us as a community. In short, I look at it this way, I'm a shamedly pro-business because without business there is no community. Business flows jobs, opportunities, lifestyle, demand for schools and all manner of things, which brings prosperity to our region and which some people lose sight of in the big picture. I prefer to engage in the politics of progress and be a part of a can-do council seizing opportunities as they arise. This, in my view, together with the other application, is one of many opportunities. I note that this application, as was touched on by councillor Hazleman, was not notified to surrounding properties as the officers considered that the application did not achieve an acceptable planning outcome and that the most appropriate recommendation would be to refuse that application. I also note that councillor Hazleman has correctly identified, the responsible authority is not obliged to refuse an application or include conditions required by this type of referral authority being the CMA. I suppose, from my perspective, I think that was a preemptive, and whilst I note their assessment, I do not agree...
Time councillor Aresvari, would you like some more time?
A couple of seconds.
No, you can have three more minutes if you choose, if the councillors agree, you agree councillors, yes?
A note further, sorry, thank you. I note further that there were no objections by Goldan Valley Water, the APA and Hub Transport Victoria, I do note that CMA objected, but their objection, interestingly, does not detail or stop the application. These are in fact state legislated requirements. Under section 60 of the Planning and Environment Act, they've been considered and noted in the body of the report and by me in the consideration of the matter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Aresvari. Any other councillor wishing to speak for this motion? Councillors for the motion before us?
Oh no, sorry.
Just checking, meaning, yes. Any other councillors wishing to speak against the motion?
Yes.
Councillor Sutton?
I just would like to note that in our tourism policy, we seek to encourage the provision of tourism facilities and services, including short-term and home-hosted accommodation, host farms and similar facilities. If we, we need to promote things like this, especially with the Chinese coming, this development would bring us millions of dollars a year, and I just think that it's, if we don't do it, we're going to be a laughingstock of, from China, and we're trying our hardest to get Chinese investment, and then we go and refuse something like this, I just don't think it's a very good idea and it won't be a good look.
Thank you councillor Sutton. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against the motion before us? Councillor Givenetti?
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'll speak against the motion. As a new councillor coming in, obviously, I'm not au fait with what has transpired previously. We've heard the officers give us their advice on this particular application, and for a new person coming in, I find it, to be honest, a bit confusing, because originally, when the applicant made their application, they were looking to develop a site on the north-east part of the particular block. Councillor Oates has recommended that they change that application to the south-west corner of the block, I think, I almost need to be corrected on that, and then in turn, a flood overlay was created and it was deemed inappropriate. I also, I think I recall that one of the council officers had indicated that the original application site was not totally under the flood plan, or flood plan overlay. So I just think that, like councillor Sutton, if we, if we shoot this application down, I think we could really hold back our development with the proposal tourism and also the Chinese markets.
Good, thank you councillor Givenetti. Any other councillor wishing to comment for or against this motion? None, okay, before we go to the votes, just to be clear, the motion is to refuse the application, so if we support this motion, we are refusing the application, if we are against this motion, well, we are against the motion to refuse, to be clear, if that was clarifying it or not.
Just saying.
I was trying to address councillor Sutton's. So all in favour of the mo... Oh, sorry Chris, you do indeed, I confuse myself so much. Councillor Hazleman, would you like some closing comments?
Yeah, I would, I'm a little bit agitated because, you know, suggestions that the motion is anti-business or anti-tourism is the classic straw man argument, it's totally irrelevant in the circumstances. What we're talking about here is the use of land, and all of the expert advice has come back and said the use of the land is inappropriate. No-one's arguing about whether the proposal itself, conceptually, it's fantastic, simply it's in the wrong location. And I'm very, very concerned that if we're moving in a different direction, that the precedent that is going to establish for uniform town planning right across the region, if somehow we're going to establish this precedent, we're going to say, no, we're not going to, we're going to ignore the CMA, does it then become no rules, no holes barred? We're just going to be willy-nilly, we're so pro-development, we're going to ignore the statutory planning rules, which we're obliged to uphold. I just think we've got to think long and hard about what we're trying to do here. Fantastic proposal, wrong location, find another bit of dirt for it, we'd have all the support from councillor we could find.
Thank you councillor Hazleman. I think it's the methodology used in arriving at the assessment that it is the wrong location is probably on the minds of some councillors in regard to this particular issue. Having said that, I will call for a vote, so all in favour of the motion? Against? Motion lost. We can indeed, all in favour, councillor Hazleman, councillor Patterson, councillor... Are we in favour? Councillor Keefe? Against? Councillor Summer, councillor Givenetti, sorry, councillor Sutton, councillor Aresvari and councillor Adam. That being lost, there was a foreshadowed motion councillor Aresvari?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. Now, the mechanics of this is that it's a five-page document, which I started off in request to Mr councillor Hazleman, requesting what the basis of would I, I'm really in your hands, Mr Mayor, as to how best way to progress this.
How many pages are we talking councillor Aresvari?
It's five pages, it's effectively a very detailed document in relation to the various requirements, whether they, I'm happy to read that document into the...
I don't see any other way but reading the document, actually, unless we can...
Point of order, Mr Chairman, nobody else has actually seen this document.
Yes, I do see that.
And nobody is going to have the opportunity to give it due consideration, we don't even know who the author of the document was, the permit conditions that may well be attached to it, do they stack up in a statutory sense? I just find, you know, impossible to try and deal with it at this point in time.
Been noted?
I agree with councillor Hazleman, I'd like the time to look at it, can we put that up as a notice of motion next meeting or something, so we have an opportunity to have a good read of it and understand it at certain occasions?
I defer to...
Look, I tend to agree councillor Aresvari, I don't think there's enough time for councillors to fully digest five pages.
I fully...
I understand you understand that as well, I'm not really positive, want to do any... I'd suggest we, by not making a decision today, well, we have made a decision to refuse the previous motion, councillor Hazel, you look as if you want to say something.
I'm just concerned that this ill-conceived action tonight, the level of risk it's now exposed this council to in terms of non-performance, and that's going to come at a significantly financial penalty to this council, simply because the homework wasn't done. I think it's amazing that a five-page document is going to get presented at two minutes to midnight.
Well, it may not get presented councillor Hazelman.
Well, that was the intention, but surely, knowing this item was on the agenda, those alternatives could have been canvassed well before this event, so that people were informed. There is no way now, no now, we can make an informed decision.
I tend to agree, I don't think we can.
I withdraw the... It's a matter for me to withdraw the foreshadowed motion.
Oh, yes, yeah, well, you can, you have...
Well, I mean, I don't see any other alternative.
You can? That being the case, we go to the next item.
Well, we have no motion in front of us, I guess, Mr Mayor, my concern with that would be that there's potentially a risk of failure to determine on council's behalf
Indeed.
and what that may bring. I'm also, I must admit, concerned that whilst in every other sense, we're interested in the neighbours and giving them an opportunity for comment, if we were to proceed along the lines of this suggestion, we're making a decision without considering neighbours at all, I just find that totally against what our principles are of this organisation. So I say that for what it's worth, and note that in putting up the recommendation for refusal, yes, we did, officers did go and get advice, as they should, to ensure that the recommendation for refusal had sound backing, and obviously, in a flooding sense, the place to get that advice is the Catchment Management Authority, but legislation does suggest that we don't have to consult the neighbours if we believe a refusal is going to happen, because in a refusal sense, the neighbours are obviously not adversely impacted. But it is the reverse, when we're going to approve something, we should advise the neighbours, so that is a significant concern of mine if we were, if we had have gone down that path.
Thank you, Mr Harriet, my response would be that we probably should consult the public irrespective of whether we have a appetite or we think we'll have an appetite to refuse or grant, but that's just my personal opinion. As there is no motion before us at this point in time, I suggest we move to the next item.
Question, Mr Mayor, what direction are we giving to our officers to deal with this matter? I'm sure the people in the planning department tomorrow will say, what are we doing?
Well, we'll, we will deal with that in the future.
They've got to deal with this tomorrow morning. What information do they provide to the applicant tomorrow, or to the Catchment Management Authority, or any of the other stakeholders in this, when the council say, well, we haven't made a decision?
There is no motion before us for this council vote on, is there?
There was.
Get across the line.
One assumes that when people pose a motion, there is an alternative, and that alternative has been well thought out beforehand to enable people to make an informed decision.
Point of order, there was a motion, it was well thought out, and...
We haven't seen that motion.
No, but as a point of clarification, I took the moral high ground in relation to the fact it would be, due to the length and breadth of the motion, there was insufficient time for my fellow councillors to be able to make an informed judgment. As a matter of natural justice and fairness to my fellow councillor going forward on this council, I chose to withdraw that notice of motion, so that my fellow councillors would be able to at a later time. Does it now, I don't know whether we've got another notice of motion there, Mr Mayor?
Well, there could be a possibility, that may have to come up now, because that item is now finished with, in urgent other business possibly councillor. Councillor Hazleman is correct, by refusing the previous motion, we're in limbo to a degree in regard to directives to the officers. That being said, item 10.8 is a similar item, 10.9, sorry. Nine, there's also recommend... And 64?
65.
This may go the same way councillors, I'm not too sure, so we have a recommendation printed on page 164, 165, do I have a councillor wishing to move this recommendation as a motion? None, no-one moving? Motion lapse? Item 10... Oh no, sorry, hang on a second. 10.10?
It's being withdrawn?
Yes, indeed it has, I just want to say that councillors please note that the applicant has withdrawn and therefore this report will not be considered. Item 10.10. Item 11, documents for signing and sealing, we have a recommendation on page 189 councillors.
Okay, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Givenetti, do we have a second, please? Councillor Sutton?
We're allowed to move an amendment?
Moment councillor Summer? What would that amendment be?
That the final dot point transfer of land be removed.
We're on pay, the final dot point, transfer land seeks to transfer land to council due to unpaid rates and charges? Okay, we're dealing with the amendment now, I will let it go through because it is relevant to the motion, and it, I think councillor Summer would suggest it clarifies the motion or makes it stronger in your...
Well, I'll talk to it if I get a second.
Okay, you will, I need, I do need a second for that amendment. Councillor Aresvari? Councillor Summer?
I think when we're doing something as drastic as transferring land back to council due to unpaid rates and charges, it will, it has the risk of being quite political and controversial. In the past, we haven't gone down this road, and we have discussed the potential possibility of going down this road, but I think it really does, each case by case needs to come back to councillors so we can examine it in a little bit more detail, because I don't know anything about this, and if somebody rings me up and says, did council take land off somebody, I really don't know what to say. So I would like that to go back to a briefing and then we make a decision at the board table.
Now, the amendment is though, that we take this point out of this particular motion, so you're happy to adopt the rest of the motion?
Yes.
Was a second, sorry councillor Aresvari? No, nothing? We're happy for the original move of the motion councillor Givenetti, for that amendment to take out that line, are you happy with that?
No, I'm not, Mr Mayor. We had discussed this at a briefing session, and I thought it was quite clear amongst us as councillors, this was action that we needed to start taking in relation to some of these unpaid rates, that had been unpaid for quite some considerable period of time. I think if council offices have put it up, they've obviously investigated the options that are available, and this is the last resort, so, no, I'm not happy to...
Okay, I was just asking, because if you were, that would make the process a lot easier. That being said, we're back to the amendment, we've got a mover, a seconder, councillor Summer and councillor Aresvari, you refuse, they refuse you...
Just a point of clarification, it was for the purpose of debate.
I thought as much.
Point of order, that's the aim is a normal second, whether it's a debate or not.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against the amendment? Councillor Patterson?
I'm really shocked at councillor Summer come... Happy to say that she doesn't know anything about it, so she's going to move an amendment, I just can't believe, it's been addressed at briefings, there's ample time and plenty of other opportunities to ask a question, but to actually move an amendment for something you don't know, I'm really surprised, I thought we'd sort of moved on past that.
Listen, any other councillor wishing to speak for the amendment? Against? Councillor Summer, do you want to...
Yes, we spoke at length about the strategy towards going ahead and taking land off people who refused to pay their rates, and there was consensus there. To have this snuck in at the very end of documents for signing and sealing, when it's going to have, it could potentially have a very large impact on somebody's life, and no, I don't know where this address is or who lives there, what their circumstances are, it could be a rundown abandoned house, or it could be a family of four, and I'm not willing to take the risk of people backlashing onto us, because we've rushed ahead and put all our trust into officers, when really, that's our responsibility as well.
Thank you councillor Summer, we'll put that to a vote for the amendment, all in favour of the amendment? Against? Amendment's lost, we refer back to the original motion, councillor Givenetti?
The motion is quite self-explanatory, Mr Mayor.
Okay, we have a councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the original motion?
No, just to say that they don't do this just because...
No, just to say that they don't do this just because they can, they do it because, for a reason, and I just think if it's been a long time being, having no rates paid, we need to do something, we need to take action.
Any councillors wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Gevenetti, any closing comments?
No, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Now, tabled motions, councillors?
If possible, I'd like to table a report that was circulated via email last month.
It's possible, indeed. What's that report?
It's NAB economics report.
Okay, good, so you're moving a motion to table that report?
Yes.
Do we have a second for that? Thank you councillor Orasvari, do we wish to speak to that councillor Summer?
Straight forward.
Okay councillor Orasvari? So it's been tabled via email, correct?
Correct.
We all have a copy councillors?
Correct.
Do we need a hard copy of this before us?
Drive and copy.
Okay. All in favour of that? Against? Yes, motion carried, thank you. Now, I have a, a report, it's not really a tableled motion, it's a table document. This is a report that was put together about the trip to China that myself and CEO Peter Harriet attended about three months ago. It's just a report detailing our locations, where we visited and what outcomes we believe we achieved. I must say that this report had to be tabled before a certain time, so we could comply with the state government's requests in regards to funding or part funding of the trip, so I'll put that down. Do I have someone to move this?
I'll leave your report, we receive.
You, councillor Hazelton, do we have a second? Councillor Orasvari? Do we wish to speak to it? No, councillor Orasvari?
No, thank you.
No. Anyone wishing to speak against this tabling? I doubt it, thank you. I hope not. For it? None, all— sorry councillor Hazelton, would you like— no, all in favour? That's carried, thank you, that's been tabled. Tabled motions? Reports from council delegates to other bodies, we have none, reports from special committees and advisory committees, we have none, notices of motion or amendments or rescission, we have none, council activities, items, item 17.1 on one page 192, there is a recommendation. Would a councillor wish to move that as the motion? Councillor Gevenetti? A second, please? Summer? Councillor Gevenetti?
I've spoken all this, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Summer? Does anyone wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion, comments? None. Councillor Gevenetti, any closing comments?
No, Mr Mayor, thank you.
To summarise the great debate that's happened on this particular subject? None? No, okay. All righty then, all in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item 18.1, the assemblies of councillors, there is a recommendation—
Page 203. You can't move recommendations, you're on page 203.
Do we have a second, please? Councillor Orasvari? Councillor Hazelton?
No.
Good, councillor Orasvari? Anyone wishing to speak against that motion? For councillor Hazelton?
None.
All in favour? Against? Urgent other business, not included on the agenda.
Well, basically, Mr Mayor, I do, based upon the fact that ten former neighbours defeated, I've got a recommendation that in relation to the planning application 216-330, the council remits the application to the planning offices to undertake public notice of the application.
Do other councillors have a copy of this at all? No? Can we— On the screen, is it? Now—
Mayor, is it technically urgent business?
We're about to get to that, Mr Harriet. Now councillor Orasvari, to be urgent other business, of course, is it something that's arisen since the last council meeting? Has it risen, has it arisen before the agenda was printed? Well, this has, or hasn't—
Sorry, it has, yeah, it's arisen as a result of an agenda item, yes.
In lieu of the fact that, I think we need some direction on this particular issue, I will allow it if, I'll allow it to be judged upon if the councillors agree to it.
Initially, we will—
We do, accept it.
—accept the item as an item of urgent business.
So, is anyone wishing to move that motion?
I'll move that, so I'm happy to move that.
Okay, do I have a second, councillor Orasvari? Do we wish to speak to that?
It's just procedural motion, so that the substantive motion can come forward for some debate, and I think the sooner that happens, the better.
Councillor Orasvari, do you wish to add any comments to that?
No, councillor—
All in favour? Yes, well, that's carried, so we will allow this as, as a motion councillor Orasvari. Now, that being said, you wish to, you've moved that motion, or you will move that motion? Yes, do I have a second to follow the motion now?
No, I'll second the motion.
Good. Councillor Orasvari.
Well, given the fact that the— A little confused. The original item 10.8 was defeated, and I've moved the motion that allows the application for the planning officers to undertake public notice of the application, so I suppose in terms of that public notice, it would involve the capacity of the people who are potentially objectors in relation to that application, to be given an opportunity to respond to that application.
Mr Mayor, how does that affect the decision that we made previously in 10.8?
Decision we made was not to refuse, not to support the recommendation, but in reality, that means we're treading water on this issue. Now—
Parts of the, of my notice of motion was to allow the matter to go back to planning officers to undertake public notice of the application, so in terms, it gives the people the opportunity—
Do we need a recommendation? No, we don't, that was defeated, all right. All right, is it all?
Easily, you're heading down the right track, yes.
Good. Councillor Hazelton, did you want to add comments?
Given my comments earlier, I think it's an appropriate course of action to make us look at least half confident in dealing with this matter. Yeah, we go back now and seek public comment, and I have no doubt that that public comment from the residents in that area is only going to strengthen the officers' position they put forward earlier.
It may not, yep.
Or it could, might in a small way.
No, not at this point in time.
And potentially, it provides the applicant, though, in the meantime, can head off to leak out on the basis of council's non-performance, which opens up a whole new can of worms for us, but at least by this process, we're at least allowing the public into the process, and we'll see, but this could go in any number of different directions.
Good, thank you councillor Hazelton. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Anyone else wishing to speak for the motion? That being said, councillor Orasvari, would you like to closing comments? All in favour? Against? Thank you, motion carried. Is any other urgent other, now, that was for item 10, just to be clear on that. Do we have occasions there, yeah? No, no, sorry, correct, that's fine, thank you. I think we can, but we have, we have, can we do that now at this point?
This is our opportunity, through you, Mr Mayor, I think we might.
Maybe we haven't, or have we?
Wish to move a similar motion again, just in 10.9—
But the similar motion needs to be urgent other business again. All right, so councillor Orasvari, would you like to move another motion in relation to 10.9?
Yes, in relation to 10.9, I think it's a planning application 216 of 331, council remits the application to planning officers to undertake public notice of the application.
We've spoken to that clearly, all stages—
Same to say.
Yeah, good. Anyone against this motion? All for the motion? Oh, sorry, before that, councillor Orasvari, do you wish— no, okay, all for the motion? That's fine, carried. Thank you, public question time, item 20.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Public question time, we do have two questions. And, excuse me, they've come from Mr John Gray, and as Rebecca pointed out, he needs to be in the gallery, so we will respond to Mr Gray in writing. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Yes, item 20, confidential management reports. None? 21.1, designation of confidentiality of information, report attachments, we have an item, we have a recommendation on page 204, I presume? Councillor wishing to move that recommendation as the motion? Councillor, that sounds so confident, do we have a second, please?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Councillor Summer? Councillor Patterson? Anyone wishing to speak against the motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer, would you like a sum up?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, that's self-explanatory.
None? Okay, all in favour? Thank you councillors, I will declare the meeting closed at 7.42.